Going to call the meeting to order. Good evening. My name is John Samia, and I'm the Chair of the Shrewsbury Select Board. On behalf of my fellow board members in the Town Manager's Office, I want to welcome you to our March 25th, 2025 Select Board Meeting. Tonight's live broadcast is being brought to you by Sarah Hashi of the Shrewsbury Media Connection. Tonight's meeting will also be available via the Shrewsbury Media Connection on YouTube starting tomorrow, where all of our other meetings are also available on the same platform. As we customarily do, I'd ask that our members and town staff introduce themselves.
Carlos Garcia.
Michelle Conlin.
Beth Cassavant.
Teresa Flynn.
Kevin Mizikar, Town Manager.
Justin Dobson, Assistant to Town Manager.
And again, John Samia, Chair of the Select Board, and thank you for joining us this evening. First item under preliminaries is to approve bills, payrolls, and warrants.
Move approval.
Second.
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to approve the minutes of March 11th, 2025, which was a meeting, and March 13th, 2025, which was a workshop.
So moved.
Second.
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is announcements, reports, colleagues.
Mr. Chair, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have one. The Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, and Belonging Committee is hosting and engaging an informative discussion aimed at addressing common misconceptions about diversity, equity, and inclusion. The discussion will be led by two panelists, Dr. Flo Zhang, the Associate Dean for Diversity, Inclusion, Equity, and Climate at the Cummings School, and Kiana Pierre-Louis, the Associate Dean for Belonging and Student Affairs at Northeastern University. The event is scheduled for Wednesday, April 6th, from 6:45 PM to 8:30 PM at the Shrewsbury Public Library, and I encourage folks to attend.
Thank you. Any others? I have two. A reminder that the 300th Anniversary Celebration Committee is hosting a community forum on March 26th, tomorrow evening, at 7:00 PM to 8:30 PM at the Shrewsbury Public Library in the meeting room. Join the committee to discuss any and all ideas and celebrations for the community's 300th anniversary in 2027. And the next item is the Community Preservation Committee is hosting a meeting on Monday, April 7th, at 6:30 PM in the Selectman's Meeting Room to gather community input on open space, recreation, human preservation, historic preservation, and community housing needs. Residents are invited to provide comments and input, which will inform future updates to the community preservation plan. So we have four announcements, reports. Next item is Town Manager's Report. Mr. Mizikar.
Good evening, board members. Two announcements from me this evening. The first, we are going to be making some critical improvements for pedestrian safety within Dean Park, which will include moving traffic around the main loop within the park in one direction. Basically, if you enter from Main Street side, you continue in a counterclockwise fashion around the main loop. There will be access out to the school street side, but we are going to begin providing more details and maps and installing signage, both temporary and permanent, within the park to make residents aware. We've received a lot of feedback due to increased pedestrian traffic, really from COVID on, and we've attempted to find the best path forward without really being able to construct a separate walking area for folks. We think this is the best option that we have before us, and we'll continue to monitor the success of this initiative and make adjustments as necessary. The changes will actually go into place before the end of April, and once we get all the traffic markings and signage up, there'll be changeable electronic variable message sign boards that are put up to alert residents of this. And second, I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank members of the Finance Committee and town staff for all the efforts that went into the Finance Committee public hearings on the budget. I thought it painted a really good picture of the progress that we've made in town. I heard a lot of deep engagement from the Finance Committee in understanding the needs of town departments. I heard from the staff members how their departments are aligning to the strategic plan and the overall goals of the community, which were tied to community feedback, and I'm really pleased with not only the questions that staff receive, but the way that they respond to them and presented themselves very professionally and concisely with kind of a challenging budget year that we've had and the resources that we're able to provide them. So thanks to everyone overall. We are well over 12 hours in total between those two sessions, and I know that takes a lot. I encourage folks to take an opportunity to look at the budget hearings. They have been broken up into segmented portions on the YouTube channel from SMC, so you don't have to watch the whole thing if you're not interested, but you can jump from department to department to learn more about our budget.
Can I add something?
Sure.
When you watch our meetings on Shrewsbury Media Connection, you can actually, on the YouTube channel, you can actually speed up the playback. So, you know, when we have five-hour meetings, sometimes you can watch it on one and a quarter or one and a half speed. So highly recommend it if you're trying to consume all of the information. It is a way to get a little bit faster.
I don't know why you'd want to speed the meetings up. Slowly.
It's kind of fun. We sound like chipmunks when we do that, so.
Just want to echo what you talked about. I thought that staff well-prepared, all the work that goes into being ready for the meetings, it required the whole process to get where they were. A lot of hard decisions as you, you know, public safety and this other departments in terms of presenting what they'd ideally like and where we landed, and there were hard choices that were made. There's a lot of thought behind the budget recommendation fiscal projection one, but there's also the commitment to stick with what we talked about to the community back in 2021. There's been a lot of hard work to remain steadfast in what we promised. We've extended the override as a result of really strong fiscal discipline, and that has continued throughout this process. There were a lot of good questions that were asked, and every member of staff was well-prepared. When staff comes here, it's a different opportunity. That's why I enjoy when the departments come here, because it's different than just looking at the numbers. It's the human element of what we provide to our residents. So look forward to having staff also come to future meetings to talk about the great things that they do outside the dollars and cents, so they understand, so our residents understand what money is being paid for and how they benefit from it. So that's great, and I also want to thank everyone who participated, also SMC, for the 12 hours that they put in. They do all of our meetings too, and they do a great job. So if there's nothing else, we'll go to the next item, public comment pursuant to Select Board Policy 31, to offer citizens the opportunity to provide public comments during our meetings on matters within our authority. Tonight, no one has expressed a desire to speak this evening, however, in the future, if you'd like to, please notify the Chair through our office by the end of business on the Monday prior to our next regularly scheduled meeting by written correspondence or email at selectboard@shrewsburyma.gov. The request should include your first and last name, address, any organization being represented, and the topic to be discussed. Just also a reminder, we hold office hours on our first Tuesday, our first Tuesday meeting of the month, and the Town Manager holds office hours on the second Tuesday meeting of the month right across the hall. And if there'd be other location, we'd let you know, but that's another opportunity to have an informal conversation, ask any questions that you have. So look forward to seeing you. Next item on the agenda is meetings, hearings. It's actually a meeting, a meeting with Attorney Trish Farnsworth on behalf of Massachusetts Fine Wine and Spirits LLC, doing business as Total Wine &amp; More, 87-97 Boston Turnpike, and the proposed manager, Tara Rose Laporte, regarding a change of manager application to their Section 15 All Alcohol License. This item requests that we approve the application to change the manager associated with the Section 15 All Alcohol License. This is not a public hearing. As a change of manager application does not require an abutist notification or legal advertisement, because nothing about the business operation, just the manager of record. So I understand that we have Attorney Farnsworth online, and the proposed manager also is with us. If you'd like to join us as well, if you could come up, take a seat, and just introduce yourself.
Absolutely.
Thank you for joining.
Thank you. You want to sit?
Yes, please, absolutely. Make yourself comfortable.
Excellent. My name is Tara Laporte. I'm the store manager at the Total Wine.
So the department heads have expressed no concerns with this change of manager. All the paperwork is in?
Correct.
Operations, again, everything else stays the same, other than the proposed manager change. Any questions at all from the board? This is not a hearing, but any questions at all?
No.
Okay. If there's being none, is there a motion?
I move the board approve the change of manager application of Massachusetts Fine Wines and Spirits LLC, DBA, Total Wine &amp; More.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, under New Business, to review an act to amend the traffic rules in orders to establish a new school zone on Oak and Crescent Streets. Good evening, Mr. Truman.
Good evening.
Town Engineer, Andrew Truman, if you could, oh, I just introduced you, but you're my introduction.
I was going to say, thank you for the introduction. Yes, Andrew Truman, Town Engineer and Engineering Conservation Division Manager. Here before you to ask you, acting as the Row Commissioners, to amend the traffic rules and regulations, as you mentioned, to establish school zones on Crescent Street and Oak Street. This request is based on multiple requests, both to the Engineering Department from the school, residents, as well as the Traffic Advisory Commission, which engineering is part of it. Currently, right now, Oak Street, the average speed is about, well, the 85th percentile is 40 miles an hour, 75% of cars traveling down Crescent is exceeding the speed limit.
Okay.
Crescent Street, I mean, Oak Street, Crescent Street isn't as bad, but there is a logic to establish these school zones on both. In doing so, we still have to follow certain rules and regulations, although the manual on uniform traffic control, so there are four criteria, brain's not working today, for establishing a school zone. One is the school is on public property. The school zone, the schools, has direct access to the school, to the street. The zone must be contained crosswalk, which they both do, and they must have grades one and two, eight inclusive. So we've been working with the school department to figure out the extent of the school zone, as well as the times to establish it. Based on feedback from them, we were asking to establish a school zone from 7:30 to 3:30 during school days. During that time, the speed limit will be 20 miles an hour. And if we get approved, we will work with Highway to have them install signage as approved. Happy to answer any questions.
So just to clarify, essentially, the main change is the timing, it's the speed.
Yeah, we can, we can, there are several ways.
It's enforcement.
It's forcing speed, right? Right now, it's unposted, so it's 30 miles an hour.
Mm-hmm.
So now we can reduce it to 20 miles an hour. It's one of the many tools we have in the box to establish a speed zone on a street. It's probably the easiest one to hit, are the ones would require traffic study.
Okay. Thank you. Questions?
I have a few questions.
Michelle, go ahead.
Thank you. I have kids at both schools, and I drive the kids, so I'm there. I'm there. I see how crazy vehicles pass through there, and there's a lot of walkers at Sherwood and Oak. So I think this is a good change. Just wanted, I just was curious for clarification, is this going to be like with the flashing lights, so during certain times of day, it's 20 miles an hour, or will it always, is it 24/7, it'll be 20?
So, yeah, so the signs will be flashing. They'll also have on the actual times on it on the bottom. So there's three portions to the sign. There's the school zone, the speed limit, and then underneath, you know, the effective hours.
Okay.
And then, yeah, we typically get the ones that are flashing, so it will be. I mean, when we did the high school, we did it, I think, seven to 10. We didn't do it the whole day, but I think this road kind of warrants having it all day, because there's a lot of traffic going in to and from the school, so.
Okay. And just curious if other schools, in other elementary schools in town, have been considered for it. I know some have school zone areas and some don't. I know at Beal, there's no school zone speed limit there, and there's not a crosswalk that crosses Lake Street where Beal is, but there's a crosswalk that crosses the driveway at the end of the school. So it's just curious.
Yeah, so you typically have to have the crosswalk across the street.
Okay.
So, you know, longitudinally across driveways doesn't warrant it, so that's one of the reasons we haven't put one under Beal School yet.
Okay.
The other schools haven't come forward. Usually, you know, when we get a request, we'll look at it, so we're happy to look at those if the schools that like us do.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Those are my only questions.
Any other questions? Carlos.
Just have a follow-up, I guess, just for my knowledge. Why aren't schools just automatically, why don't they just automatically have a school zone around them?
That's a good question. I, I mean, so we have to check to make sure they meet the warrant, so some schools may not meet the warrant, but I mean, I can certainly go through that process.
That's a local thing? It's not a state, like?
It is part of the state, yeah. They have two UCD requirements, so say there's the four.
Oh, got it, okay.
Requirements to meet the warrant. So a lot of them have the sidewalk, but the property, but they don't have the crosswalk, or they have the crosswalk, but they don't have the sidewalk. Usually, one of the, one of the four is missing.
You're right, okay.
But I think that's, that's a good point. Maybe we'll go through the exercise and just see where we are with the other schools, and we show the school department.
I believe, was it, it's in the recent past, we added a school zone on Floral Street. Is that correct?
Most recent one we did wasn't the high school, when we converted the driveway to a public street.
Yeah.
And then we came back and put the school zone in.
Okay.
Those are the two I've done. I have to go back and check the history on the other ones.
Yeah, I would like to see, you know, if we could, as a, you know, look at all the schools in the community and see what, which ones might, may qualify that aren't currently.
Yeah, I'm happy to put together a quick report for you for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Entertainer motion.
I move the board approve amending the traffic rules in orders to include Oak and Crescent Streets under school zone pavement marking and traffic signs.
Second.
I've been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda, under New Business, review an act to sign the April 14th, 2025 special town meeting warrant. Invite Mr. Baldinger to come up.
I wasn't sure. You're talking first.
Introduce yourselves.
All right.
Mr. Pitney, good evening.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the Select Board. My name is Patrick Pitney, and I am the Chair of the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee. I am here on behalf of the committee and the entire project team to recommend and ask that you move forward and vote to approve the DPW and Town Hall project at full scope. The committee feels that moving forward now provides the most value for the money and is the most fiscally prudent and responsible action to take for the town. This work will address all of the needs for the DPW and Town Hall. At the DPW on South Street, there will be a new water and sewer building, as it is at the end of its useful life. The highway garage will be renovated, including upgrades to HVAC, electrical, roof, offices, bathroom, locker, and employee spaces. These renovations will provide a safe, appropriate workspace for these critical town employees and will meet all of the equipment space needs. The renovations at Town Hall are also critical in terms of life safety, HVAC, fire suppression, ADA compliance, and asbestos mitigation. This project, again, will provide a safe, appropriate workspace for Town Hall employees now and well into the future. The Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee thanks you for your consideration. At this time, Mr. Chair, I'd like to turn it over to Keith Baldinger, who will walk us through the cost impacts if this project is delayed beyond the current schedule.
Thank you, Mr. Pitney. Mr. Baldinger.
So thank you. So with Vertex's help, we walked through some options that show price, cost, and timeline for different, for moving the project forward now or doing some delay actions. So, Justin, if you can move to the next slide. So this first slide shows, will show us moving forward as originally planned through the April, through an April special town meeting and then May election. The, the design team will complete the design, and we're getting the project in September. At that point, the construction manager, Fontaine Brothers, will have to give us a guaranteed maximum price, which is called the GMP, and so it'll be ready for construction in October of this year and complete in October of 2027. Total project cost is $40.3 million, which is what we came to you with, you a week ago. And with the project currently at 60% design, Fontaine has expressed confidence in the budget, and we will continue to pursue cost-saving measures through the 90% design. Next slide. So option two, is we continue design and vote full project with GMP at fall 2025 town meeting, which would require also a November special election. So we would go through a similar process, similar timeline. The, the cost increase is about $300,000 to $40.6 million. The only difference in this option, really, from a, from a timeline perspective, is we lose about two months of the project, and we would go, we would go to a fall town meeting with bids in hand, but there's still escalation that we're expecting, excuse me, design costs implications that would add to $300,000 and escalation. And then we go to the next option, option three. This actually is similar, is this pushes the project off a full year. It adds about $1 million to the cost and sets, it just literally sets the whole project back one year and adds $1 million to it, and, you know, that is what our estimated inflation is. There are a lot of things that could happen between now and then, it could be more. Then the final slide that we have up here shows other options. If we pull it out further, you know, obviously, the cost doesn't go down. It's about five, it says it's about 5% year over year, and then we're just pushing back all of these needs for both buildings further out. So our recommendation, as Pat said, is to move, move forward with the full project with option one. It keeps us on schedule, it minimizes inflation risks, and thanks to the CMT risk model and current 60% design, offers minimal financial uncertainty. So we recommend proceeding with this option, which has been our intended track all along, and it addresses the community's, community's needs now with the lowest risk of further change or escalation. I can answer any questions here, or we can go right to the financial model. Mr. Chair.
Why don't we go to the financial model and then take all the questions at that time? Please.
Switch slide, Jack.
It's all related, so I figure we'll have the costs and the options.
So while Justin pulls that up, I want to take the opportunity to illustrate, first and foremost, the implications for the project with regards to the tax bills. And I want to compare that to where we were when we took the project to the fall special town meeting. So, Justin, if you could move forward once. So what we have on the screen here, we've been very diligent in our development of our capital investments over time, and we've always set 20-year borrowing terms for our major capital investments under what's known as a level principal debt repayment schedule. The benefit of a level principal debt repayment schedule is that the amount that you pay each subsequent year is less than the previous year. So the first year of the borrowing always has the most significant impact, because it's the highest amount that you're going to have in any 20-year repayment term, and then it declines year over year. So that provides opportunities, given, we have 1.2 million square feet of buildings that we're responsible for as the town. We always know that there's going to be another project on the horizon, and costs obviously continue to go up. So any opportunity that we have to structure our debt to give us room to not have spikes within the tax bill, to layer debt on as debt rolls off, has been our plan. And I think we really have the opportunity to take advantage of that with this project. So what you see on the screen in, in the blue is the existing debt that is already issued and in repayment. And starting in fiscal year '25, on the left, you move across and you see that declining schedule. When we went to the special town meeting in the fall, we had illustrated a likely $756 total debt service portion on the tax bill, and that was holding level with the FY '25 debt service portion of the tax bill. What we have before us this evening is an increased project cost. It went up about $10 million. We're proposing to use about $2.2 million in cash that we have on hand, in free cash, and $2 million of free cash, $225,000 that we received from the sale of the easement for 50 Centec Boulevard. Those two things provide that the impact that we see today, under the worst-case scenario as the project's currently designed, is $50 above that. So it would, rather than hold tax bills completely flat with regards to the debt service portion, it would increase the average single-family home tax bill by $50 per year, allowing us to make a $40.3 million investment in the community. There are utility bill impacts associated with this. $16 million of this debt will be covered through utility bills, water, sewers, stormwater, solid waste, and the balance, roughly $22 million in debt, will be incurred through a debt exclusion within the tax levy. So I see value in this project, when we're able to take advantage of our declining debt service, diversify the funding streams for the debt repayment, and take advantage of what's been rolling off versus the impact of this project. So happy to ask or answer any questions you may have about the, the tax portion of this. We can answer questions about the utility rate impacts as well, if there's any, but turn it back over to the Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mizikar, Mr. Baldinger. Questions? A couple questions we have in front of us that I see, in addition to any questions related to tax impact, project, scope of the project, and timing of the project are questions in front of us, in addition to any other questions that you have. The M-FAC options are in front of us in terms of, you know, what the project value is now. We had presented to us before, options would be pulling items away, if that's something someone would want to talk about, including the swing space or office space, the island. And what was the third? Oh, up here, the project here. So we had talked about that as well, but we, so we have the comprehensive project, the recommendation to us last time was maintain the comprehensive project, but I also wanted to go back to the conversation on the 18th, that there were other options presented to us in addition to what's here. So open it up. I know we had a very fulsome discussion last time. There was information, I'll summarize briefly what I had heard, but then I'll turn it over to members. There was questions about timing and ability to get information out to the public, get FAQs out there, make sure that the public understood what the cost impact would be, what the benefit is, opportunities, open houses. If we could actually talk about that in terms of, we, last week, we had canceled the Wednesday open house. What opportunities would there be for information sessions for residents? I know we had the walkthrough, and we've had virtual tapings, but.
So we have, we have four on the books right now for public outreach. So we have April 2nd, April 9th, and April 23rd, which will be at the DPW garage on South Street. They're all from 5:30 to 7:30 PM. And then we have session at the Council on Aging, Senior Center, right here, on the 24th of April, and that's from 1:00 to 3:00 PM in the afternoon.
Okay. Thank you. So that's just a very high-level summary. I know we had a lot longer conversation than that last week, but the floor is yours in terms of any questions on the project, thoughts on the project's scope, and thoughts on timing.
Sure.
Thanks, Teresa.
Thanks. Help me understand minimal financial uncertainty. This is, I mean, let's, a week ago, you weren't very confident in your recommendation. In fact, you didn't make a recommendation. It was kind of, we're ready to proceed if you want to proceed, but we're ready to pause if you want to pause, and now it's a very hard recommendation of move forward, full scope. So I think I need to hear what changed, why we're recommending it this way, and what we mean by minimal financial uncertainty, because I think right now, residents are thinking like, okay, the number's this, it's only going to go up. So help us understand why you say that is not the case.
So I would suggest that, you know, we were nervous when we came here last week, you know, because we're asking for, we came to you with a project that's $10 million more, and we were uncertain about that piece. We do know that working with our estimators and with Fontaine Brothers, that they're confident that the $40.3 million is what the project will cost if we go right now, go, go now on our intended path. If we go beyond this or we change, that's where the uncertainty really comes in on the number. Fontaine Brothers has to give us a guaranteed maximum price. We're going to continue to work with the design through 90% and look for other cost-saving measures, but the project team itself is confident that we'll stay within that number. We won't come back and ask for more.
Any more, other questions? Go ahead.
I was going to ask about the alternatives of not having the office space. You know, tell me how you landed on proceeding full scope.
So I think the issue there is, you know, as a municipal facilities optimization committee, that was our charge to find the most, you know, the best project for the community that optimizes everything here in Town Hall and gives the DPW the new garage and optimizes their space. Anything less than that isn't really what our charge was, you know, because we could end up, we end up with just a DPW garage. It doesn't help us at Town Hall, it doesn't improve or renovate this building, doesn't, you know, it doesn't, we have life safety systems that are end-of-life that we will have to replace anyways, and the longer we push that off, the more money it will cost. So I think putting it all, so putting it all together in one package is really the best bang for the community's buck.
Can I just add to that?
Yes, please, Mr. Mizikar.
So when we, we looked at the scope alternatives, when we had the opportunity, we, so if we look back over the last three weeks, we've had a lot of things come due. We got the, we got the cost estimate a little less than a week before the meeting, the last meeting we had on the 18th, and we immediately put the project team into this value engineering, alternatives development approach. And I think that led to some nervousness, as Mr. Baldinger said, as we came back to the meeting last week. When we look at the alternatives, the first alternative, I think, just needs cast aside right away. It's, we'd be failing to replace underground fuel storage system that's been in place for 30 years. Like, why would you take on a project and not mitigate that risk if nothing else? It's a million dollars. If you had a catastrophic failure of an underground system, you're going to spend a million dollars in the first three weeks to clean it up. So that, that's a no-brainer. In my opinion, the fuel island needs to be included. The next step is, is a $3 million question to consider the office space. Thinking about the historic way the community has managed the operations that are now part of the Department Works is contrary to how we manage things today. We're a consolidated department with centralized management. We heard the DPW director, in my opinion, give a pretty good explanation of the culture that he needs to build and the management that needs to take place onsite as a unified team of a department of 88. Right now, we have 70, 65 to 70 of the staff that report to South Street and a handful of professional technical staff that report to the Town Hall. I may have that off by a few numbers on each side, but seeing the value or hearing the value that he thinks he can provide from a unified operation, I think is important. That's a $3 million question. The last part, considering the Town Hall, is $4.4 million on top of that. And we've cannibalized this building, we lack the opportunity to have conference space within this building to have a professional operations. We're servicing residents as well as we can, but to allow the school department to consolidate their staff, to allow us to have conference space, I think there is more value to making the changes to that aspect, let alone that over half of the cost is in life safety, or $3 million of the, of the $4.4 is roughly in life safety. So we need to make life safety improvements at some point, let's make the additional investment at this time. When I look at those two increments and apply them back to the, the tax bills, you're talking about $15 or so for each additional component. And while I don't want to minimize the impact of $15, it's $15 over the entire year, basically, you know, for each incremental add for the average single-family home. If we're going to do this project, I think the board was right a little less than a year ago in the big context of saying, let's, let's, let's find the right project. We originally looked at the Town Hall with a 15 to $20 million scope when we were looking at the police station. We've shaved that scope through a thoughtful project and brought the Town Hall impact to $4.5 million. Yes, there's $3 million that we're putting into South Street that we maybe wouldn't have, so look at $7 million. If you look at the office space, it's a $7 million investment in lieu of a $15 million investment. I think we have optimized this project really well, and the full scope of the project is, without a doubt, my recommendation, because we accomplish so much with an efficient project. Everything would have to be revisited by itself in the future if we don't take any aspect on.
Thank you. Further questions, comments?
May I ask anything?
Yeah, go ahead, Teresa.
I just, I know that the question you always hear from people is, what's rolling off? Could you just give the actual projects that are decreasing in debt, just for context?
So, um, let me see. So first and foremost, a lot of interest just rolls off on an annual basis. About $300,000 is rolling off in, in just interest alone, and that cascades over a number of different projects. From fiscal year '24, in fiscal year '26, it'll be the last payment for the fire facilities project, and that's $345,000. So that is a major project reduction. And then, I think that, I think that's the biggest single project that, that rolls off from '25 to '26.
Thank you.
Am I, Mr. Snowden, am I missing anything?
Okay.
But it's really, the benefit of that model, as you can see, is that, it doesn't mean that a project is rolling off every year, that the interest payment that we make every year declines. So that's the benefit that we're getting, and it is a reduction in interest costs. So I can tell you on a bottom-line basis, when we look at the excluded debt, the excluded debt is the debt that is on the tax bill that has been raised through a ballot question that directly impacts individual taxpayers. So in total, in fiscal year 2025, the total excluded debt is $9,318,000. And 2026, it's $8,681,000. In 2027, it's $8,056,000. So 2025, $9.3 million in debt service. Two years later, in 2027, when this project would, would hit full impact, is $1.3 million less.
So that's the room in the debt service to bring something on?
Correct.
Thank you.
Teresa, you have another question?
I do.
Okay, go ahead.
What do we gain versus what do we lose by waiting and doing a special election in November?
Well, a few things come to mind. One is the cost of the election. Since we don't have an election scheduled for November, it would be a separate cost that we'd have to bring in forth. The second, maybe part and parcel to that is convenience. You know, voters are going to the polls for the election already. You know, we have it scheduled in, in May, it's, it's part of the routine. So those are the, the first two things that, that come to mind.
What, what could materially change if we wait?
Oh.
Or we talked about pause, right?
Sure.
So I'm more looking at what do we gain versus what do we lose in terms of pausing? How, I mean, I'm hearing that the cost is not going to shift.
Mm-hmm.
There's a slight increase by waiting, but it's somewhat de minimis in the big picture.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
So, I mean, I went on record last week as sort of not being comfortable with the timeline, and so I need to kind of hear why I should potentially back off from that. So I think I hear, I agree that the project is critical, so a pause to me is as short as possible. I just want to reconcile what could change between now and potentially taking it to Fall Town Meeting and doing a special election. Absent, you, you mentioned cost convenience. I do think, despite our best efforts, it's really hard to get people to go vote off-cycle. So I am a little concerned about the ability to get people's attention on this, but I think I more want to understand pros and cons.
The things that I perceive, and the project team can certainly weigh in as well, what the project team said at the last meeting is, the cost increase from September to now is, is not the tariff inflation, so I do worry, you know. I don't think it can be overstated, like, we are clearly in uncertain times, and we see things changing a lot. So I think if there are significant tariffs, this is a large project, it's a $40 million investment, and there's a lot of materials associated with that. Maybe it's not even just cost, but, you know, it could be delays in getting the materials into the country that I would worry about, which could delay and prolong the project. And then, interest rate uncertainty, the, the interest rate that we're using is conservative as possible, it's at 4%. That's really tied to the 10-year treasury note, and, you know, if the economy takes a turn for one reason or another, it's subject to volatility. I mean, those are the two biggest things that I see in my head, more from a financial standpoint. I don't know if there's practical implications with the project of starting it in November versus starting it in June or something.
I think just from a construction standpoint, a couple of other things that I would...
If you could just introduce...
David Fontaine, Fontaine Brothers were the construction manager for the project. I think to your point, you got to consider both options, right? I think it's critical that design, you know, continues and bidding proceeds. The market right now, by any metric, is more advantageous than it's been in terms of, you know, demand on the subcontractor's side, we're seeing a lot of bids. So I think if the project were to move forward, then we have the flexibility to, you know, procure long-lead items as needed within, you know, the budget that's been allocated, as well as to bid some kind of early packages to the subcontractors to lock in, you know, the project cost in like the most efficient manner, while still waiting to proceed until we execute a GMP, a guaranteed maximum price with the town. So it allows kind of that, you know, procurement flexibility. I would also say that there are municipal projects each year that get bid in, you know, a cycle where the bidders know that they're still in like a pre-funding stage, right? And subject to, you know, approval after the bid. And I think that from a, you know, generating subcontractor interest standpoint and getting the most bids and the most aggressive bids, if the subcontractors know that the projects are funded and moving forward quickly, then that minimizes the risk that they carry in their bids, because they don't need to hold them for, you know, 60 days or 90 days pending different votes. So we've seen that, you know, subcontractors are more interested generally when they know a project is funded and will continue forward. Those are my thoughts construction-wise.
And if I could just add on, I think part of that risk is if we were to delay till the November of special election, and if there were any uncertainty at that time where there were another delay, that would put the, that guaranteed maximum price at risk. That would only be, if we secured one in September, but for whatever reason, whether it's the vote or whatever, that guaranteed maximum price would not hold. And so then we'd have to go back and you're almost starting all over. And those cost escalations in April and October, and '26 and '27 would fall into place. So I think really, by starting right now and minimizing the financial risk that we have, and also gaining some efficiencies through having the entire project team onboard right now and under contract moving forward, and we can, you know, the planning out of the whole project in terms of phasing and timing and construction is much, we can gain a lot more efficiencies that way than by delaying.
Yeah, in terms of efficiencies too, one other positive aspect is the operational inefficiencies at two locations, that's still there. So the faster they can be located at one location is consistent with how DPW's organized now, and you leverage those operational efficiencies too. Just a quick question, so the environment right now, procurement, it's favorable? So it's possible, historically, we've done our projects on time or early and under-budget generally. So the environment now, at least lends itself, I'm not going to put words in your mouth, but it lends itself to favorability towards where we typically end up for our projects? Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I mean, to the extent, obviously, you know, we, we've been involved now for, you know, a couple of months, edited the documents, we've gotten market feedback, you know, from subcontractors that would like to be bidding this project that's, you know, helped us to assemble the current estimate. It's a similar process to how, you know, we were involved at, you know, from an early stage at the police station, at the, at the library, at Beale School, all of which from, you know, our initial estimates to project completion, as you said, we're on time and under budget. So we feel that that same process has been taken here, this number now. And, you know, I, I think that time, you know, is on your side as far as moving forward bidding-wise, because we're still seeing uncertainty in the private market with people moving forward and stuff, so public projects that are bidding currently, if you look across the state, including work that we have in our bidding, have been coming in on or under budget with, you know, the interest in publicly funded projects with the private uncertainty.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? So where we at in terms of project scope and next steps? So I guess the first question is, where were you with scope? Package as presented, we've talked, Mr. Mizikar's presented or his thoughts as to unwinding it or unpacking it, what's the thought on that?
Can I ask a question first?
Yeah, please do.
Mr. Mizikar, do you have in a separate form, like, this is what Town Hall adds, like, as far as the impact on the taxes, this is what the DPW, in my mind, like, the full scope of the DPW with the office space? Like, it's this much on the tax bill, and then Town Hall is this much, just to kind of understand the impact separately?
I think so.
While you're looking for it, like, I'm pretty confident that I'm at, having, you know, participated in the full, all the building committee meetings, all of it, like, I'm at full scope, right? If we are to decide this evening that we're moving forward, I am at full scope, but I did just want to understand, and I just think the public's interested in knowing, like, what are the two components, right? Because if it's just an incremental to get to the Town Hall, my concern is that we... Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, 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 I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, it's all right. Well, I guess to finish my thought, my concern is that, you know, in 2020, the decision was made to delay these repairs at Town Hall, so now we're five years beyond that point. And I just, I'm not confident in how much longer it will be before the HVAC doesn't hold, and we are now looking at trying to figure out how to manage that replacement cost within our regular capital budget or operating budget. So just thinking about that, I just want to understand the numbers.
HVAC's 27 years old, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, so it's not getting any younger. So, go ahead.
The, of the debt-excluded portion, right, the Town Hall is roughly 20% of that price. So it's $4.4 million in total.
For the Town Hall?
That's right.
Right, I know that, but like, what does that mean for the average single-family home?
22, so sure.
Taxes.
A fifth, right?
Increase.
$4.4 to 22?
So it's roughly $31 on the tax bill.
Okay. Because I don't, I think what I haven't heard yet is, what's the total impact, right? Like, the total impact gross to the taxpayer for the full scope of the project?
Sure.
Is X.
Mm-hmm.
But then net, when you back out what's coming off in interest and the fire facilities project, the net is X.
It's $150.
Total.
On the tax bill.
Yep.
31 of that is the Town Hall, 30, 32 of that is the Town Hall.
32 for the Town Hall. And then when you back it out, the net would be, you're saying fifth, no, is that true?
So when you're saying net, you mean the year over, the increase to the tax bill with that coming off and this adding on?
Yeah.
Yeah, the, the net increase is $51.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, right there.
I need to calculate, I know I need to calculate.
It's right there.
The net increase over the previous model, are we on the same page? Net increase over the twenty-five tax bill.
No, just the net increase to taxpayers. Yep, if someone says to me, how much is this going to raise my taxes? I want to be able to say...
Net, net fifty-one, right?
Versus your FY twenty-five tax bill, it's fifty-one dollars.
Because that's the net.
Yeah, that's the net.
Right.
Right, the gross number is a hundred and fifty dollars.
Yep.
But we're losing roughly a hundred dollars in other debt service, taking on a hundred and fifty, so fifty dollars.
Okay. So if my math is right, then the DPW accounts for a hundred and eighteen of the one fifty and the Town Hall accounts for thirty-two of the one fifty. Right, so like I guess the point I'm trying to make is, for thirty-two dollars a year, which is eight dollars a quarter, I'm not going to back away from a Town Hall that I know is five years past when we needed to actually be dealing with it. So that's where I'm at.
Michelle, go ahead.
A few years ago, we passed in a debt exclusion to build a new school, we passed a debt exclusion to build a police station, and we passed an override, an operational override, and they all, and our home values in the community, in the state really increased all sort of at the same time. And it was a perfect storm of, you know, seeing these, these huge increases in our, in our annual taxes. And that was a real struggle for a lot of people. And one of the things that we've talked about a lot over the last three years, and last year we had an exercise where we had a workshop and we had this huge whiteboard and we literally laid out every single building that we own in the community. And we laid out our financial forecast and where we'll need to make investments in our capital. You know, we have this, this long history in Shrewsbury of, you know, doing the bare minimum to keep the ta, the cost to taxpayers low, but what ended up happening is we had all of this deferred maintenance and deferred investment that all kind of came to a head at the same time. And we had to do a police station and a school and pass an override all at the same time. And that really, they were critical investments in the community and, and the community agreed that they were critical investments, but they really impacted a lot of people in a tough, you know, a tough time. And so one of the reasons why we are where we are now and we have to make this decision tonight is because when we did that whiteboard exercise and we laid out all of the investments that we would potentially need in our community for operational overrides and all of the investments that we'd have to make into our infrastructure and our buildings, this was the best time to make an investment in this building. It's seventy, one of them's seventy-five years old, one of them's fifty years old, and it's time to make this investment. We have, it's not a vanity project, right? It's, it's an important project, it's life safety stuff, it's structural and infrastructure updates on the buildings, it's extending the longevity of our equipment, it's program efficiencies, having a unified operation. These are really important things. And, you know, last week I had a lot of concerns, you know, we were talking about timing and we were talking about changing the scope of the project. And I was really uncomfortable with changing the scope of the project and potentially changing the price of the project six weeks before we brought it to voters. I think we have a lot more clarity this week than we did last week. And I think, you know, I was really uncomfortable with pulling off some of these really important items that we need to invest in as our, in our community, that if we were to pull off some of these items, that this project would not be meeting the needs of our community at that point. So I think the full scope of the project is really the way we need to move forward. Personally, on the timing side, it still feels really tight, but I think, you know, when we look at the long-term cost of delaying it, you know, a six-month delay is, is fairly minimal in cost impact, but anything beyond that, you know, for the same project, we're just going to be paying more money. And I think if we can sort of commit to our community that will, that this will be messaged aggressively, that moving forward is in the, in the big picture, in the, is, it's in the long-term best interest of the needs of our community and the impact on taxpayers.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Mr. Baldinger and the rest of the team for the presentation and the information. I also believe that it's important for us to do the full scope of work for this. Many of the key services that our community expects from us are the services provided by our DPW. The work on South Street and Town Hall will help ensure that we continue to provide residents with high-quality services that we have all benefited from for years to come. The challenges identified at those facilities are only going to continue to deteriorate over time and need to be addressed. Understanding that the cost for this will only increase the longer we delay, I believe it's prudent that we continue to move forward to have the least impact possible with this. In speaking with residents over the past few weeks, past two weeks on this project, the thoughts I've heard are the same. With that being said, I understand that the ten million dollar above estimate that was presented to us last week or two weeks ago was not what we were expecting. I appreciate Mr. Mizikar's commitment to utilizing other funds to help bring that down to reduce the impact to residents. And Mr. Baldinger, I appreciate you for committing to find more cost-saving measures on this between now and May and also the April election if we move forward. I expect robust public engagement on this to bring the residents and voters up to speed on where we're at and their role to play in this when it comes to a town-wide vote in May, again, if we move this forward. I also ask that Town Meeting members who are listening, if, if this moves forward today, to continue to engage with residents in their neighborhoods and to reach out to their own constituents to get more people up to speed on this project. I think it's, it's important that we have those conversations with all, all people in our community. And again, I appreciate the continued public engagement that you are committed to doing. I anticipate that we'll have a very engaging special Town Meeting in April if this is signed today, so I look forward to that discussion. Those are my thoughts, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I just have a few that the most important part of when we charged this committee was optimization, right? And whenever we do a plan, a planned capital project, it enables us to be future-ready. So we have a longstanding history of developing projects, as I've already talked about, that have lasted us a long time, at or under budget and on time or early. And one of the concerns I had last week was to make sure that we had enough price certainty that we could be at or under budget, understanding, we have a lot more certainty at sixty percent where we are and we wouldn't, any cost, we don't expect there to be cost increases in the data that we have. When we whiteboarded and Michelle's talking about that, it was very important and we heard from taxpayers loud and clear, particularly after the override that the impact taxpayers had, looking at all the capital projects, all the way out, I think, to twenty forty-four, was looking at spacing out projects to minimize tax impact on residents, but also to make sure that we're providing the services that our residents expect. And to be able to do that, we need to continuously leverage efficiencies. And that is important as part of this project, that hasn't gone away. Kevin, something that you talked about too, if you looked at handful of years ago, what the cost of Town Hall would be when we're looking at a potential expansion of Town Hall versus what this is, this is at a lower cost, to decouple, particularly given life safety is a majority of the expenses that aren't going to go away, you're going to have to pay them either now or later and those costs aren't going to go down, to put it in a situation like this where it's thirty-dollar impact while not nothing at all. And we're not suggesting that, we know that, that times are tough for a lot of people, it just leverages this project to make sure we get back to the original purpose, which was optimization. So I do believe from a certainty standpoint, we're as far as we can, from an FAQ or resident perspective, I know we have those four opportunities, we need to continue to get information out to residents as much as possible and provide other opportunities to learn about this project. I mean, anyone that walks down at the DPW can see that we, this is a long overdue project and as we've done in the past, we've exhausted our infrastructure to well beyond its useful life and it's just time. So for me, I don't think it makes sense to decouple the full project, it defeats the purpose of the work that you've done. Timing, it is what it is, but the need's not going to go away and the faster we can get the efficiencies, and this isn't fast, by the way, it's a couple of years out, the better, longer term for operation, and this does fit with the overall plan that's been developed, consistent with our strategic plan, but also mindful of not having a significant year-over-year impact on residents. So I'm for moving forward and we can talk about what that would look like, but the full package is where my head's at. Anything else? So I've heard consensus, well, let me, Teresa, I want to see where you're at. So, so far, full package, but please go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, help me understand when we put this, you know, the warrant language, this goes to Town Meeting, so we're, we're essentially talking about what we're going to propose to Town Meeting, which is full scope. What happens if Town Meeting pushes back? Is it yes or no? It's not sort of variations of what we're putting forward? Help me understand.
Can you talk timeline generally up to, from now, if we move forward, what does Town Meeting look like? To address Teresa's question, if it, there's something on the floor and then after that, if Town Meeting were to pass whatever the form is, what happens after that? So could we talk timeline, but also address Teresa's question?
So there'd be flexibility at Town Meeting if alternative scope was to be presented from what the Select Board is recommending before we get there. So it could be scoped, right? You're not, the warrant article itself does not set you up for specific project scope. It comes with a recommendation and the presentation that would be made, of course, and that would be what the board desires to bring forward as a project, you know, whether that's the committee's full scope recommendation or, or something different. That decision doesn't necessarily have to be made tonight, what gets presented to Town Meeting. The figures that we're using though are...
Yep, I understand.
Beyond that, the question that gets asked of the voters, if a borrowing authorization is granted by Town Meeting, that sets the specific number that can be borrowed. The voters are then asked to service the debt. So the, you know, the election ballot, it doesn't have a specific number, it's, shall we be allowed to raise money above and beyond the limits of proposition two and a half to cover the debt service associated with the project?
So from a timing standpoint, if we elect to do so tonight, we had to sign the warrant, that would be for April fourteenth Town Meeting.
Correct.
April fourteenth Town Meeting, I guess the, also question would be whether or not to place a question on the, so Town Meeting will have, that is also a question of having a ballot for a debt exclusion, also for May sixth, correct?
Correct.
Same day as the Town Election. And then also part of our special legislation, if we go forward, would be under the acts, it would also, like we've done in the past, a proponent and opponent would have to give notice and then some date certain, and there's a fourteen-day minimum requirement from whenever we sign the warrant.
Correct.
To come back with those arguments.
Correct.
Okay, so that would be, if we move forward, that'd be April ninth.
Correct.
Fourteen days. So just to lay out days.
Yep.
If we sign the warrant tonight, special, the, under our special legislation, it'd be a minimum fourteen days for the arguments, that's April ninth. April fourteenth, special Town Meeting, if, if we sign the warrant, that's what special Town Meeting would take up. And also if we also elect to put on the warrant, the ballot, excuse me, the question for May sixth. So those are all the things as part of this, if we go forward, they're just multiple actions we need to take consistent with that.
Correct.
Assuming we're good going forward.
You know, I don't like to be a flip-flopper. I've, you know, when I've talked to people over the past few days, when I was informed by the Town Manager that, you know, he was recommending that we move forward with this at the Town, Special Town Meeting that we were planning on, I hear universally, like, I know we need this, and the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. I know Shrewsbury needs it, we specifically timed it to mitigate taxpayer impact, knowing that if we push it out, it would just be a more significant impact and might bump up against other needs. But I have to say, I mean, we're not crisp and we're not coming across as confident and we got to get our ducks in a row. And the way I look at it right now is I agree with the full scope. I think when you start to pull back things that, you know, not because it was the charge of optimization, but because I truly think that it is the best value for, for taxpayers, I'm fine with recommending that it go to, to Special Town Meeting and to go on, on the ballot. But I do think that we have to do a better job of explaining. I think last week, you know, this is transparency, it's sort of, we're bringing it forward in these meetings, as we get the information, we're working through it. And so some might think that that looks, you know, sloppy, but I think you did a good job last week of explaining why the estimate was higher, it wasn't sort of a mistake, it wasn't like we completely blew something, but we have been sort of trying to back into this timetable of getting it on this May ballot. And so this is part of that. But I do think that based on what has been shared with me over the past few days, that we are confident that this is a maximum cost, what we're trying to do is ensure that the cost doesn't go up significantly from here. I don't think my opinion on needing it has changed. And so that's why I feel like I'm more comfortable than I was a week ago, but I do think that, as you had said, Mr. Samia, having FAQs, having a very clear outline to Beth's points about complete tax impact, like we can lay this out a lot more concisely. And it's not to be critical of how we got here, again, we've been kind of working through it, but now our charge is to make sure we distill this and that we're fully prepared, you know, for Town Meeting. I think we can anticipate a lot of the questions we're going to get.
Two pages or less where the most important points is an executive summary of what this is. And if someone wants to look at more details, we'll have those available for them, but crisp is a good word. We want someone to be able to look at it, understand, I mean, we're doing this real time. The last two meetings that we've had, it was a lot of information last time to digest, had a lot of time to think about it since then, I've had conversations with residents and surprisingly, it's been universal, unanimous that want to move forward with the project because the needs aren't going away. But what we absolutely, and I heard that last time and I've heard it tonight, is that we need to be succinct, we need to be exact, and we need to be clear. And that is incumbent upon all of us if we elect to go forward from now to Town Meeting, if it goes forward from Town Meeting in terms of a positive from now to May sixth, but we need to get better and sharper and that's all what we need to do. And we've heard a lot about that, we've had concerns with that, we can do it, but we need to do it.
Yeah, even just, you know, people have asked me, well, why can't you not do the Town Hall? I mean, we have to show that this isn't excessive, we have to show that it's not the bare minimum where a few years from now, people are going to say, wow, that was really short-sighted of you, but that we're not, you know, being excessive. You know, we're not talking about redecorating Town Hall. I think we need to clarify what we mean by, you know, the, the life-saving upgrades, that this is something that is going to cost the taxpayers regardless. And so we're not just looking to sort of squeeze these things in because we think it's the only way to get it done, these are necessary investments that the Town needs to make and we're trying to look at, how do we do it in a way that is, again, going to have the least impact on, on taxpayers? So I think, I think we can get there, but I would like to see us, you know, be really thoughtful about that approach.
Could I make a comment? To Ms. Lynn's point about transparency, you know, somebody, you may ask, like, why do we have these agenda items tonight if we hadn't, if we didn't know coming in here, right? Like I, we didn't know coming in here what, we don't still, I mean, we haven't voted, but like, we didn't know what the decision was going to be, there's been a lot of information that's come at us in the last two weeks. And we're here tonight, you know, to make this decision, but like why is, you know, review and act to sign the Special Town Meeting warrant, placing a question on a ballot and providing notice to principal proponents and opponents to the request, why are those on our... Why are those on our agenda tonight? And it's because of that timeline that we are working really hard to meet because it is the timeline that is in the best interest of taxpayers, that if we are to meet, you know, put this on a ballot for May sixth, the decision has to be made tonight about, and bringing this to a special town meeting so that it can be on about the, the ballot for the election on May sixth. So just, I just wanted to clarify that. If there's questions, like, why, why are these decisions all on our agenda tonight if we didn't know coming into this? You know, this is, like, you're kind of seeing how the sausage gets made right now. And that's usually, you know, it's, it's, we have such amazing professional staff here that, you know, a lot of times, things are delivered to us in a pretty package, and the decisions are really easy, and we don't have to kind of go through all this, you know, back and forth and changing opinions and decisions and new information's coming at us in such a rapid, you know, short amount of time. Like, this is, this is the reality of it. This is what it looks like. So.
And the other thing is, we can't take action if it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, yes, which is why it's on for tonight, so.
Right, we could just as easily vote no as vote yes, depending on the information we're given, right? And, I mean, what's it been, two weeks? Has it been two weeks?
It's only been two weeks.
I mean, that first phone call, you know, from Keith informing me that there was a ten million dollar difference between the estimate and the actual cost. I mean, ten million dollars is a lot of money.
March six.
Right? That, yeah, that's a lot of money. And, you know, I started with dread, right? How could it be possible after twenty-five MFAC meetings that the number was that far off, right? But the longer I've had to sort of work it through in my mind and speak with our project team to really understand what goes into an estimate, I, you know, hindsight is twenty-twenty. I could look back at moments when I wish we had maybe not said something, right? Like, this will never be as expensive as the police station, but, you know, the police station in today's dollars would be, what, sixty million dollars? Right? So the, that, I think, is the point of comparison. You know, it, what do I know about Shrewsbury? I know that we have a really great track record of bringing in projects, you know, on time and under budget. And I am confident in this design team that we are not going to exceed the number that we are being told is the number. And all along the way, as we proceed, if we proceed, the, we weren't going to stop looking for efficiencies, right? We aren't going to stop turning over every stone to figure out that we're getting the best bang for our buck. And construction manager at risk gives us that extra security, right? Because that means that we're sharing with our construction manager in that desire to make sure that the project is brought in, you know, at the guaranteed maximum price or below. And, and that is something that gives me the confidence to go forward with this. I believe asking for the same project in a couple of months or a year, if there's a failure at the ballot, is not the fiscally conservative or the fiscally responsible way to go. Especially when I know that at any point in time, there could be a need at any one of the three buildings that we're looking to upgrade, that could then create instability in our operating budget or our capital budget and require us to have to make emergency repairs on a building that we know we're going to ultimately be replacing or upgrading. So for me, I would rather move forward on the original timeline, but double down on the outreach. And it can't all just fall to the building committee, right? I think any one of us, I've heard all of us talk tonight about how we've had these conversations with people. I mean, I had somebody stop me in Wegmans. Like, that doesn't usually happen. People will stop me in Wegmans, want to talk about the building, like, what? It was so strange to me, out front of town hall, coming into finance committee on Thursday night. Like, people want to talk about this, and I hope that people know that they can reach out to any one of us to have that opportunity to really talk through what the project means, why there's a change in the number, what ten million dollars looks like when it's spread out over the entire community, that the impact is probably not the, you know, the sticker shock that it's, you would expect it to be because you are spreading it out over such a large tax base. And that is an advantage of living in a community of our size. So while I don't take the overage lightly, I do understand that it's not because we added all these things into a project. It's because the initial estimate, you know, was low for a variety of reasons, but that we've identified that problem, we've come forward to the community with it, we've owned it, and we've looked for ways to, to progress that are in the best interest of the long-term health of the community. And that's what, you know, I, I see as my role on this board and on the building committee, is to look out for the, the long-term, you know, not just the short-term, but what does this mean for the future?
Okay, so what I'm hearing is everyone is in favor of, the complete project is recommended from the committee, the timeline of proceeding to town meeting, and then putting this on the ballot for May sixth. Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your presentation. So we have, as Michelle talked about now, anything more from you at all? Go ahead.
I just don't want to, we haven't talked a lot about the utility bills. You know, we're, we're talking less than twenty-dollar impact for water and sewer combined for a year. Like, I don't want someone to think that, like, you know, there's some secret on the, on the, like, someone's gonna get whacked with a big water or sewer bill because we're breaking this up. That portion hasn't changed, which is why we haven't focused on it this evening. We've held that consistent. We have a long-term financial plan that, that caps those rates on a five-year basis. We're, we're within those plans of five percent. So because of that, you know, I, I just don't want someone to, you know, read into that because we haven't talked about the utility bills, but, you know.
It's a good point. It's agenda item number eleven.
Well, I mean, we'll talk about, yeah, we're gonna talk about specific water impacts because we have it this evening. I mean, water, for the average user, you're looking at roughly three dollars and twenty-seven cents a quarter for this project, to enable this project.
Thank you for that clarification.
Helpful. So, okay. Coming back to the agenda, so the agenda item eight. This relates to, to review and act to sign the April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five special town meeting warrant. One thing I did want to say before I turn it over to what the board wants to do is, Teresa, to your point, it's important to break out at town hall what the value of the life safety systems and the value of ADA improvements, to really spell that out. And we know the total value, but then be clear that life safety, twenty-seven-year-old HVAC, you know, expenses with that. So like I said, we're not decorating these certain needs. It's, it's, rather than stave off the, you know, the inevitable, it's to couple it in and have the thirty or thirty-one dollar impact on the tax bill on an annual basis, as we talked about earlier. So it's packaging it together to address multiple needs, hence the, you know, the charge to the committee. So it's a pleasure of the board on the, with respect to the special town meeting warrant.
I'll make a motion to sign the warrant. Do we want to read the warrant, show the warrant, or just feel like?
Yeah.
That might be.
Just a key share.
Yep.
So the warrant article that we're proposing this evening, board members, is our traditional capital investment article. I'll just read it. "To see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate borrow and/or transfer from available funds an amount of money to be expended under the direction of the Municipal Facilities Optimization Committee to design, construct, repair, equip, renovate, expand, and/or replace the town-owned buildings located at two oh five through two eleven South Street, Shrewsbury, and located at one hundred Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, the latter known as the Richard D. Carney Municipal Building, including but not limited to the costs of acquiring land, cost of architects, engineering services, site work, abatement of hazardous materials, demolition services, and all other costs incidental and related thereto, or take any other action in relation thereto." So just to be really clear, that's our standard warrant article. We have no anticipated concept of needing to acquire land. It's safe to keep it in there in case, for some reason, we needed a small easement along some side of a property to, to do some of the construction work. None is anticipated at this time. It will all be clarified through the motion that's presented at town meeting.
And this is the warrant article that had been reviewed by bond counsel?
It has been reviewed by bond counsel and general counsel, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now we have the warrant. We've gone through that.
I move the board sign the warrant for the April fourteenth, twenty-twenty-five special town meeting.
Second.
Have it moved in second. Did all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to place question one on the May sixth, twenty-twenty-five annual town election ballot pursuant to Mass. General Law, Chapter fifty-nine, Section twenty-one C. Thank you, guys. This item requests that the board vote to place the question listed on the agenda. We can read through that, or I'll ask as part of the motion. On the May sixth, twenty-twenty-five annual town election ballot, Mass. General Law fifty-nine, Section twenty-one C stipulates the required form of question relative to a debt exclusion. According to the Division of Local Services Resource on Prop. Two and a Half ballot questions, the select board must vote the question exactly as it will appear on the ballot, and we have in our materials exactly how that reads. Anyway, we can put that up.
Yep.
So we'll put that on the screen as well for a recommended motion, and this is exactly the wording on the ballot, as what we vote on tonight. Should we choose? Just give one second. And there it is.
Okay, I'll read it as part of the motion. I move the board vote to place the following question on the May sixth, twenty-twenty-five annual town election ballot and inform the town clerk. The question being, shall the town of Shrewsbury be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two and One Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for the bond issued in order to design, construct, repair, renovate, expand, and/or replace the buildings located at two oh five through two eleven South Street, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts, and the design, repair, and renovation of the Richard D. Carney Municipal Building located at one hundred Maple Avenue, Shrewsbury, Massachusetts?
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda, to review an act to provide notice to principal proponents and principal opponents of the request for written arguments for inclusion in the voter guide, and to set the date by which written arguments are to be received according to Chapter four twenty-seven of the Acts of two thousand and six for question one on the May sixth, twenty-twenty-five annual town election ballot. As mentioned in the agenda item, this item requires, requests that the board provides notice to principal proponents and opponents of the request for written arguments for inclusion in the voter guide and to set the deadline for when written arguments must be received by the select board. Town is one of eight communities that's adopted a special act authorizing the town to prepare and distribute voter information on municipal elections. The procedure is outlined in the special act. The statute requires that we seek written arguments from the principal opponents or opponents of the question that we provide at least fourteen days' notice before the date by which the written arguments are to be received, which is April ninth. If no arguments received, then town council shall prepare the argument, and once arguments are received, they shall be included in the mailing to registered voters along with a full text of the question with a summary of the question, including one second statement, uh, one sentence statement of the effect of a yes or no vote as prepared by town council. So that would be April ninth, if we elect for April ninth to be the date and time, say noon, we would have to come back as we did in the last time with that referendum, and there was only one proponent, there was only one for and one against, argument, yes or no argument, and then we'd choose, if there are multiple, we'd choose from those. But that is the process. So the earliest date would be fourteen days out, which is the ninth of April. So that's a date after our next meeting, so we'll have to figure that out about convening on the ninth or later. So what's the pleasure of the board?
So I just want to make sure that we convene in time to allow enough time for the voter guide to be mailed so that it doesn't bump up against
The date itself.
the dates for requesting a mail-in ballot.
Uh huh.
And I don't know that that's possible, given the timeline is really tight. So do we, do we not, I mean, I don't want to put that information on there and frustrate people.
Understood.
Right? Because, and I don't know exactly what information is required by the clerk to go on that voter guide. But I do know from the past special election, you know, there was, you know, a group of, of residents who really felt like it was just purposely done, right? In order to prevent people from knowing about their mail-in ballot, like, the deadline. So I'd like to get it out as soon as possible. I know it says, you know, at least, I think there's like, I don't know, there's language in the statute that I think allows us to put it out earlier. I do understand that we're working with less time right now, so I would have to really look at a calendar to figure it out. But I'm confident that the town clerk will have on her website all of the dates for requesting an absentee ballot or requesting a mail-in ballot. And hopefully, we can maybe ask Ms. Kalusha to include that in, in a weekly update as well, and just so that we have it in multiple places. Because we really, we do want people to vote, right? Like, suppressing a vote is never, ever the intention, right? We want people to know how to get a ballot and when.
Yeah, quite frankly, it's silly to say otherwise that we'd ever try to suppress the vote when we champion all these issues and, and talk about these. But right now, from what I see, it, it would be mailed out roughly eighteen days in advance of the election. You know, that, that would be the most conservative. That's getting it out. If we, if the board votes on the ninth, that's saying we wouldn't get it out till the eighteenth. You know, that, that's a tight timeline to get it to the printer, right? We don't know what we're gonna have until the ninth, when the board votes. We'll have everything lined up to get it out, hopefully by the sixteenth, but, you know, no later than the eighteenth, which again is eighteen days. As I've, as we talked about before, we paid the priority, the higher rate postage for, for the last election. We can't control the USPS, but I'd love to chat with anyone, you know, otherwise because we're doing everything we can to get all the information out to folks.
Right, and then I also believe it is one per household.
That's correct.
It is not one per voter, and that was something else that I think caused confusion, where, well, not every voter in my house got one, so the town isn't informing every voter. That is not the intention.
That is not.
The intention is one per household.
But was it addressed to one voter in the household?
I think it's addressed to the person who fills out the census.
Wow.
I can speak to that. Yep, so the voter guide is mailed through the office of the select board as opposed to the, the town clerk's office in terms of putting together the guide and working with, with the print vendor. The label had included the voter's name or current resident. And the reason why it included that or current resident was because we decided to send by priority mail, and by having that language there, it would allow the mail to be forwarded appropriately if somebody had relocated in town since last registering with the clerk's office. But I do understand that that caused some confusion because you might see a, a mail parcel come in with only one person's name or current resident, and there might be multiple voters in the household. So in speaking with the clerk, I think the, the next time we do the mailing, we would just put current resident, so that way it's clear that it's for the, or more clear that it's not for one individual, but all the voters in the household.
Great. Thanks for looking for ways to improve the process.
Yep.
What's the pleasure of the board, given the requirement?
I move the board act to provide notice to the principal proponents and opponents of the request for written arguments for inclusion in the voter guide pursuant to Chapter four twenty-seven of the Acts of two thousand and six, and further move the board set the deadline for when written arguments must be received by the select board as April ninth, twenty-twenty-five, at twelve P.M.
Second.
Have it moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item, speaking of utilities, review an act on the proposed water rate adjustment for fiscal year two thousand and six. If I can invite Mr. David Snowden up. Good evening.
Good evening, board.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get the
So while you're doing that.
...set up, and we'll go.
This item requests that the board, in our capacity as water commissioners, to approve the proposed water rate increase that Mr. Snowden will be presenting momentarily for fiscal year twenty-six. Floor is yours.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening. We can go to the first slide just a minute, if you have a chance. All right. So based on the two thousand and twenty-three adopted Water Fund Financial Plan and the given fund balances, we are proposing an aggregate rate increase of five percent and the given fund balances, we are proposing an aggregate rate increase of five percent for FY twenty-six over the current rates of FY twenty-five. And this proposal is in line with the financial plan that was adopted in two thousand and twenty-three. I mentioned it's a five percent aggregate rate increase. As not every, the residential and commercial were retained at five percent. There were some that were a little less and some that were more. And the reason this is, is we tried to, on a regular basis, review the consumption by customer class and raise revenue proportionate to the actual use. We don't want to unburden one class or customer more so, so we do try to monitor and tweak these as we move along. If we go to the next slide, Justin. So a five percent rate increase will be applied to the tier rates. The quarterly consumption charge will be remaining the same as it has in twenty-five, so for the vast majority of our residential meters, that is a twenty-dollar charge per quarter, and that's for all meters that are less than one inch. For larger meters, there is a larger quarterly charge, and these are also posted online. If you look following the quarterly charges, you can see the residential and condominium rates. So the first step was, is going to be, was two dollars and thirty-seven cents. It will be going to two dollars and fifty-one cents, and then the other rates are listed there as well for the customer courses, classes, commercial apartments, summer service lawn, municipal and schools, and municipal and school lawn. If we go to the next slide, Justin. This here is providing a snapshot of the residential bill, residential and condominium bill impacts, and you'll see that I've got some, four rows highlighted. Eight thousand gallons per quarter, twelve thousand gallons per quarter, seventeen and thirty. The first one, eight thousand, represents twenty-five percent of all residential usage within town, falls within eight thousand gallons per quarter or less. And then we go up to fifty percent at twelve thousand. Seventy-five percent of residential usage falls around seventeen thousand gallons, and then ninety-five percent, excuse me, residential usage falls less than thirty thousand gallons. So this gives you a snapshot of users and where they may find their bill impacts. Now, you could also see the percent difference, which is the second to last column. It's not a five percent to every customer class. Again, we're trying to raise revenue proportionate to those that, to the use to provide it, and we also have a conservation-based water rate system. So our lower-end customers will see a slightly smaller increase, and those, as they proceed higher above, you know, on the higher side of the bell curve, they're going to see a larger than five percent increase. The five percent increase for FY twenty-six, for the, we'll say, the seventeen thousand gallons per quarter represents about a four dollars and fifty-six cents change or four point twenty-nine cents increase over FY twenty-five. That's per quarter. And in, to provide a quick reference to our earlier discussions, the M, the M-Fok project, the DBW facilities, this, that same figure, ninety-six cents of that four dollars and fifty-six cents is essentially a set aside or proportionate to that project. So there would still be a three dollar, three dollars and fifty cents increase regardless to maintain the distribution system of the water utility, and the M-Fok project is about another ninety-six cents per quarter, or as the town manager said, three dollars and change per year. That's a really quick overview. We ensure that these are all posted online once they're adopted. And the reason why we do it this early in the year is because of how the billing cycle works. This will go into effect on the first billing in July, which impacts usage starting in April for the residential meters in the center section. So we want to make sure that residents can review this and make changes if needed prior to there being any bill impacts. And I can, happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments? Be straightforward, but any questions?
So you're just saying that the average use, right, is around that twelve thousand gallon?
If we were to, yeah, just go by the fifty percent, yeah.
Okay. So you're talking about a two dollar and sixty-six cent difference?
Per quarter.
Per quarter.
Per quarter.
Understood. Also understanding that small differences do add up.
Oh, one hundred percent.
Yeah.
And again, what we try to do is, like I mentioned earlier, charge rates according to the actual use and demand on the system. So we're trying to make it proportionate.
Correct.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
Yes.
Thank you.
So I'm sure I'm not missing anything. Nope, I just moved the board approve the proposed water rate increase for fiscal year twenty-six.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Snowden.
Thank you very much.
Next item on the agenda is to review an act to authorize the chair to sign the initial compliance certification from the Massachusetts School Building Authority relative to the Shrewsbury High School project. Mr. Mizikar, can I turn over to you?
So board members, this is a project that was authorized to proceed through the application phase of the MSBA process last spring, and in the late winter, midwinter, the MSBA granted approval for Shrewsbury's application, and this is the first step in the process. The initial compliance certification is a document that confirms the town's agreement and understanding of the various rules and regulations associated with the MSBA grant process. The town has a baseline repayment or contribution amount from the MSBA of roughly fifty, fifty-two percent, meaning that MSBA anticipates reimbursing roughly fifty-two percent of any costs that are authorized moving forward. This is a rather, you know, initial preliminary part of the process where we're just affirming the rules and orders of the grant process, and the project would proceed at its next step through the establishment of a building committee at the annual town meeting in May.
So from a cost standpoint, this is procedural, no costs are being approved?
Not this evening.
Okay. Questions or comments? And just also, as part of this process, there's going to be, it's a tried and true process, options in terms of what this could look like. MSBA does all their calculations and looks for potential scoping of this, and hopefully as part of this process, seeing if there are ways to either have a scaled-down project from even any preliminary discussions that we've had or potentially utilize some existing space if we can repurpose some of that. But that is a TBD, correct? Okay.
That is correct.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I was pretty vocal when we voted last year on just the statement of intent. The school department discussed their, their longer-term budget planning at the finance committee hearings this weekend, and they were clear about fiscal challenges. There are a lot of growing needs and requirements, and it's clear it's going to be increasingly difficult to manage the annual rate of increase just to sort of maintain the current state. You know, I listened carefully. We heard that we're not contributing at the level that the state believes we could, and therefore we're at a minimum aid district. We, some think, are under-invested in our education system, well below averages in spending across the state, and some are saying that Shrewsbury can afford more and can afford this expansion to the high school. But, you know, we're talking about property values of increase, so tax bills have increased significantly. We're increasing utility rates, and while needed and somewhat moderate, it adds up. Inflation is high. We're proposing this municipal optimization project, which I do consider a critical need, and working really hard not to put more on taxpayers unless I really think it's critical. So, and then on top of that, we're going to need an operational override that is part of our stabilization strategy. And so I get that this is sort of more administrative. This is part of the process. We're not obligated to spending, but I feel strongly about making a point that I do not support putting this project in further process. I understand that it could come back at a lower scope, a lower cost, but initial projections, it is the equivalent of an override to taxpayers, and I just don't have any confidence that we're going to see it be significantly less than, than what it is. You know, we're responsible for balancing needs with what we can afford, and I don't feel confident that we are going to meet our educational budget needs in the shorter and longer term, and I just don't want to propose that we add something as material to this. So I wanted to kind of go on record as to why I'm going to be voting no, and I'm likely to vote no on anything related to, to this project. But I just think, especially after sort of hearing the discussion at these, you know, committee meetings, I just think it's really important that we recognize this track, that this has the potential to go down and what the impact can be to the town. So I don't think it's fiscally responsible to proceed, and I want to say that.
Okay. Any other thoughts?
I really appreciate your perspective. You know, I also was at those budget hearings, and, you know, I, I can see that, you know, in order to maintain the level of service that we, you know, currently have that requires increased investment, I also voted, you know, not to send the letter of interest in the first place for all the reasons that I noted at the time, including my priority being an operational override and my concern that a high school project will overshadow, people will see it as an either-or. And to me, you know, a, a larger building is, is critical, right? I know that they're crowded. I don't, I don't disagree that the high school is overcrowded. The numbers are very clear, but I do believe that having the, the resources to provide students with the programs and the education that they are currently receiving is going to require investment in the form of an override at some point, and that, to me, is paramount to any building project. However, I am comfortable going forward with this step of the process, understanding that it does not include any funding commitment and that it's just going to provide additional information for a final decision when that point, I think it's what, November of two thousand and twenty-five?
So when we talked a year ago, it came to me about optionality, and this, right now, we still don't have what the option is. For me, it's still procedural. I, I think there were a lot of conversations during the finance committee meeting about appropriate expenditure and the related expenses and fiscal projection versus what we have in our model, and we talked about having a tri-board meeting. I think those are conversations as board, as boards we should have in this budget cycle, knowing what was presented on Saturday in terms of what projection they have versus what we have in our model and the commitments, the collaboration and the compromises that we made to get this far within the override. So, you know, I respect Teresa's points. I'd like to, and part of the idea with a tri-board meeting is to really have discussions now about that, to understand the pressures that are there. They're no different years ago than I was on the committee. The difference is we have funded better as a community. So those conversations I hope to have in April with all the boards. In terms of a value judgment on the project, I'd like to see what the project is. MSBA will go through this. I think of Sherwood back many years ago now, that Sherwood MSBA approved a larger project, and the town requested that it be scaled back, and it was. And that could be an option on the table. We do know that there are fixed costs related to a twenty-plus-year-old building, HVAC, roof. We have an idea as to what those expenses are. To me, I'd like to see what the project options are, and there's time to digest what that is, whether set up a building committee, there's an option at that point by town meeting, right? And then after that, in terms of funding a feasibility study. So there are mechanisms along the way, whether or not to move forward, and then ultimately what a project would look like or could look like, and MSBA does commit, take community feedback. So I, I'm willing to go forward as part of the process. We're not committing funds. However, we do need, as boards, what I had with the conversations on Saturday, to have this conversation now, talk about the model, level set what we did, what, why in twenty-one we did it, and the activities that we've taken to extend the duration of the override, that we originally talked about four years, but have been working hard to continuously expand that period of time, understanding the impact on taxpayers. We've had some positive developments with commercial and industrial, so tax bills this year were lower than the previous years, but all of this needs to be talked about, and hopefully going forward, we get back to tri-board meetings maybe once a year just to talk about where we are, where the community expects us to be, and, and move forward operationally as well to address some of the concerns that were brought up to really address them as they come, so they're not out there and can have these conversations, and meaningful conversations, particularly as elected and appointed boards for our community. So I, I'm fine moving forward, like to see what the project looks like. But to me, this is a procedural aspect, signing a certification that will abide by the rules, and there's a lot more work to be done to see if it's viable for our community. Carlos?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I echo those, those, those thoughts. I think it's important for us to see what the options are and to continue having conversations with our colleagues on the school committee and also with the community at large to understand, to better understand what this project is and what it, what it may look like when it comes to those future steps. And as I stated back when we voted on this last, last year, there are multiple steps, so I think, you know, continually having those check-ins every few, you know, every step of the way is, is important. So I, I'm also comfortable with moving this forward.
You know, I agree with a lot of the sentiment shared this evening. You know, it's an administrative matter. It's really just procedural to move forward without, you know, we're not committing any funding at this point or committing to, you know, the full, a full project at this point. It allows us to, you know, use the next six months to understand what this, what the needs are, what the scope of the project might be, and, you know, we have an opportunity here. You know, the, the high school is overcrowded. It's, it is just a fact. And construction costs, I want to say, almost never go down. So, you know, whether or not this is the right time to move forward on something, you know, a full project like this, we don't have to make that decision right now, but we can continue, by voting yes this evening, we can continue to gather information and keep us in the process to have the state potentially pay fifty percent of the cost of something that will likely never get cheaper. You know, the scope and scale of the project could decrease and decrease the cost in that, in that regard, but the cost of construction in general never goes down. So I'm comfortable moving forward on this administrative matter, and there are more decisions to be made in the future, and I'm happy to move on for now.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, can you just, I mean, we're calling it procedural and administrative, but if this board voted not to sign this, this process stops. We are no longer eligible for this MSBA funding. So I just want to be clear, like, it's procedural, but it's impactful. So it's a little bit more than just, you know, I, I don't, again, it's, yes, there's fifty percent, but initial fifty percent has us at over ninety million dollars. I mean, this is probably the most substantial capital planning project this town will see. And so I just, I don't take that lightly. And again, I think that I, I've said my piece. I understand that this could go in any different direction. I don't think we've exhausted every other option, and I would hope and I will be vocal about making sure that we explore every option to not have to make this type of investment. to not have to make this type of investment that is currently being signaled.
I don't, if I may, I don't disagree. You know, you're not wrong there. It just, you know, voting this evening is not committing us to anything other than continuing the conversation. And that's where, you know, whether or not we decide in six months to keep moving forward, you know, at that point, we will have, that will be a decision where we're committing money to this. And, but at this point, you know, it's just, this vote is whether or not we're going to stay in the conversation or not. And, you know, the needs are there. And whether or not it's the right time for the community is something that is a decision that we'll make in six months. So.
Okay. It's a pleasure, the board.
I move the board authorize the chair to sign the initial compliance certification from the Massachusetts School Building Authority for the Shrewsbury High School project.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, to review an act to sign the May 19, 2025 annual town meeting warrant. Mr. Misakar?
Board members, we have prepared the special town, excuse me, the annual town meeting warrant for your consideration this evening. The warrant includes 44 different warrant articles, many of them being traditional to previous annual town meetings. But I will roll through the warrant, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Article one is a standing article to receive reports of town officers and committees. Article two chooses the trustees of the Wright and Harlow Charitable Trust. Article three would transfer any funding necessary to pay a bill from a prior fiscal year. Article four would make any adjustments to the current fiscal year's budget if necessary. Article five would propose a sum of money into the override stabilization fund, if special purpose override stabilization fund, if any. Article six is the annual operating budget for fiscal year 2026. Article seven is to receive funding from the cable TV division of Selco to offset the tax rate. Article eight is similar, but the electric light department to offset the tax rate. Article nine would appropriate a sum of money to offset the tax rate using free cash. Article 10 is to fund the annual operating budget for the solid waste enterprise. Article 11 is the annual operating budget for the sewer system. 12 is the annual operating budget for the water system. 13 is the stormwater annual operating budget. 14 provides funding from Selco in the Cable Television Public Educational and Government Access Program, which funds the operations of SMC. Article 15 is to pay the out-of-pocket expenses, medical expenses of retired and disabled police officers and firefighters in accordance with the general laws. Article 16 is to raise funds and place them in the insurance trust fund, which is used to cover costs associated with deductibles and other general insurance matters. Article 17 is to place funds in the general stabilization account. 18 placed funds in the sewer stabilization account. 19 placed funds into the water stabilization account. 20 is to set the annual revolving limits of the, for the annual spending limits for the revolving accounts under Article 22 of the general bylaws. Article 21 would be to receive funding from the Commonwealth for Chapter 90 program, local roadway improvements. Article 22 would transfer funds from the sale of cemetery lots to the perpetual care fund. Article 23 would be to transfer funds for water quality improvements for lakes, ponds, and waterways within the town of Shrewsbury. Article 24 would be to place, to raise funds for counseling and education services and funding Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services. Article 25 is the general capital improvement budget. Article 26 is the sewer capital improvement budget. 27 is stormwater capital improvement budget. 28 is the water capital improvement budget. 29 is an article by petition entitled, "The Regulation of Sale and Use of Bottled Water Within the Town of Shrewsbury", proposition of a new general bylaw limiting the sale of one-time plastic bottles. Article 30 is to accept the provisions of Chapter 200A, Section 9A. It's procedure for the disposition of abandoned funds, commonly known as tailings. When someone doesn't cash a check, and the town retains that asset and how those funds are disposed of or retained. Article 31 would be to transfer the use of 248 North Quinsigman Avenue to the care, custoding, and control of Selco for the construction of a new headquarters and related structures facility. Article 32 would be to establish a building committee for the repair, renovation, expansion, or replacement of the Shrewsbury High School. Also, consideration of proposition with small sum of money to cede the work of that building committee. Article 33 is the administrative warrant article associated with community preservation funds, anticipating the local CPA surcharge and state matching funds and distributed them under the statutes into the administrative fund, historic resources reserve, community housing, open space, and general budget reserves. Article 34 is an article recommended by the Community Preservation Commission to fund the replacement of playground equipment, new surfacing at Arrowood Park. Article 35 is a CPC article that would be used for the purpose of preserving Shrewsbury mortgage and ledger index books dating back to 1832, which are in need of repair, bonding, and mold remediation. Article 36 would be the use of CPC funds for installing ADA-approved ramps and pathways at 65 Prospect Street, known as Prospect Park. Article 47 is a CPC article that would provide funding for a MASH Trails grant to develop current schematic design and construction design for trails within the community, specifically a multi-use trail around Jordan Pond. Article 38 is proposed amendment to the zoning bylaw, amending the definition of lot frontage to ensure individuals' properties are protected at times when streets are widened or improved. Article 39 is an amendment to the zoning bylaw, changing a variety of uses associated with accessory dwelling units within the town. Article 40 is a proposed amendment to the general bylaws, procedures at town meeting to allow for the use of electronic voting. Article 41 proposes to raise funds to cover the cost of the acquisition of electronic voting system. Article 42 is proposed general bylaw allowing the undergrounding of utility poles and overhead wires. This is a repeat article as the Attorney General's Office found a flaw in the way that this was presented. There was no prior public hearing in advance of the annual town meeting last year, so we have to go through the process again. Article 43 is a proposed general bylaw to allow for maintenance of private roadways using public funds within the community. Article 44 would amend the general bylaws relative to Article 29, Section 7, associated with some minor features of the Wetlands Protection Bylaw. That's 44 different warrant articles proposed for the annual town meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions? Pretty straightforward. With the pleasure of the board.
Move the board sign the May 19, 2025 annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Misakar. Our next item on the agenda is to review an act on the reappointment of Lynn Youngren as a registrar of voters for a term set to expire on March 31, 2028. It's item request that we reappoint Ms. Youngren to serve as a registrar of voters. She is seeking reappointment, reached out to her, and she expressed interest in reappointment. So hence, this being an agenda item. What's the pleasure of the board?
So moved?
Second.
Been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So I'll email the appointment letter to Ms. Youngren, along with the open meeting law and conflict of interest materials, which she'll be familiar with, having been in this role before, and copy the town clerk's office. Next item on the agenda, 15, to review an act to appoint two members of the Zoning Board of Appeals with two-year terms set to expire on May 31, 27, as we have done with multiple applicants for a fixed number of positions. We were given a ballot, none of, sent to each of us individually. We sent back only to Mr. Dobson our preferences. And then they were tallied and given to me right before the meeting. So we had four applicants for the two-member slots on Zoning Board of Appeals, but the two applicants that received the most votes were David Moore, who is being reappointed, and Francis Manella Jr. So those two received the most tally votes for two-year terms for the ZBA. Is there a motion?
Move the board appoint David Moore and Francis Manella Jr. to the Zoning Board of Appeals with two-year terms set to expire on March 31, 2027.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? None. Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Agenda item 16, similar. We have three associate members to the Zoning Board of Appeals with one-year terms. So this is a first. We actually have a tie. So we have two applicants, Jonathan Mack and Justin Adcock, received the highest two level of votes. But there's a tie for two applicants, of two applicants of Megan Vincent. Oh, actually, I'm sorry, there isn't a tie. Oh, there is, because he's on it. Sorry. Yeah, there is a tie, because the way it worked is he had multiple applicants for it. So Michael Hopkins and Megan Vincent are tied. So the way to settle this would be really by majority vote. All the applicants, obviously, were very, had great credentials, had an opportunity to look at their resumes. But what's the pleasure of the board? I know this is never easy. And just to put out there, we appreciate everyone that applied and will keep their resumes on file. And if they're not appointed tonight, for other opportunities in the future. Any comments, questions, thoughts, recommendations, nominations? So Megan Vincent. Yeah, I mean, it can be, yeah.
I don't remember how I ranked people.
I'm always partial to incumbents unless there's a reason not to. I think that, from what I've observed, and I haven't talked to Ms. Vincent directly, that when she has been asked to sit in, I don't know how frequent it has been. She's been unavailable. I don't, I'm sure it's due to scheduling constraints. But I think my vote would be to reappoint her as on the, as an associate member and hope that she will have the opportunity to be present when needed.
I would agree with that.
So there's been a motion?
Any other comments?
Well, we can nominate her motion. I mean, I'm.
I'll make a motion to appoint Megan Vincent as the third associate member of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
I'll second that. And if I may just comment, I think, you know, as she's been an associate member and, you know, assuming there is a learning curve to, you know, getting up to speed on serving on a board like the ZBA. So I, you know, she's been following the process and I support nominating her to remain as an associate. So second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor.
Do you want me just to make a motion for all three, then?
Well, let's, so let's get that. Because it was a tie, I think we have to have a motion.
Okay.
I mean, technically, we're not going to do the other motion to not appoint the person tied, because you're going to have a majority. So I would, I'd do this, that we do the vote for Ms. Vincent's, say, choice, and then let's do a motion for all three.
Okay.
Okay? So we have a motion in second. So all those in favor, I guess, for Ms. Vincent to break, it's, serve the slot, but it's not really, it's to serve in this role to essentially break the tie. It would be the choice nominee, I guess is the better way to put it. It's.
Justin, I'll make it work.
Yeah, I'll make it work. Because really, we should take an action that we're, because there's a tie, that we're going through the process of breaking the tie. And now that we've broken the tie, we have the three. We can make it work. I know it's silly, but I think we should go through that process.
Okay.
So we move in a second. All those in favor of Ms. Vincent.
Aye.
Serving, aye. Most opposed? That's unanimous. So now, we've, we have three nominee, we have three associate members that we can put for, to serve one-year terms. So it's Jonathan Mack, Justin Adcock, and Megan Vincent, now are the three nominees. So that was more for nomination. And now we have the three that have received the most votes to serve that role. So if you could now read that. And I know it's confusing, so good luck, Justin.
So motion to appoint those three members to one-year terms set to expire March 31, 2026.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So thank you. I think that is the right way to do it. Next item on the agenda is to review an act to request a comparable communities analysis study from the Division of Local Services. This is a technical requirement for DLS. So we held a workshop on March 4, 25, to discuss a form of government study. We talked about this actually at our meeting on November 19, the day after town meeting, to start this process, to look at our form of government, and talking to DLS to at least give some parameters to what this would be, get some information about what similarly situated communities did, but really just to give us a starting point. DLS seemed to have a lot of information, but to be, for them to go forward, they do require a formal select board vote. Hence, that's why it's on the agenda. Any questions? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved? Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Snowden, you didn't have any comments, did you? I thought it was pretty straightforward. Thank you. I just noticed you were on that, so sorry. Next item on the agenda, review an act to set the fiscal year 2026 active employee health and life insurance rates. These rates were approved by the West Suburban Health Group and subsequently by the Insurance Advisory Committee on March 12, 2025. Mr. Misakar, comments? Rate seems pretty favorable year over year.
Yes, so this is an interesting year. The renewal that was proposed for our active plan rates came in at 6.75% across the board. The West Suburban Health Group is in a favorable financial position. We have a trust fund balance that exceeds our policy level. The policy level requires that the trusts have 8 to 12% in it. The estimated balance would be 13.5%. So we're using those additional funds to reduce the rate impact on towns and subscribers for fiscal year 26. So the total impact for the rate renewal itself on the town will be just shy of 3.5%.
Any questions or comments? Not, is there a motion?
Move to set the fiscal 26 active employee health and life insurance rates as outlined.
Second.
Have been moved in second. And all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now we enter our into correspondence. Item 19, email dated March 14, 2025 from Robert Raymond, Manager, Transportation Data Services, Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Commission regarding CMRPC traffic count program. So moved.
Mr. Samia?
You.
On that one, Mr. Misakar, it says that we can add three additional traffic count locations? I had a suggestion.
Yes, please.
Do you think we could do one at Cyus Avenue and Tatum Road to get an idea of the traffic volume? Because I know that there's resident concern around there being a. Because I know that there's resident concern around there being a restaurant going there and, like, neighborhood traffic?
Yes.
And then I was also wondering if we could recheck the bottom, the lower portion of Holman Street heading toward Main Street, as there's often been questions on that, and it's been a couple of years, I think, since we've done one there.
Sorry, Holman End.
Holman, just the lower portion of Holman, like, closer to Main?
Sure.
Thank you.
Next item is email dated March thirteenth, twenty twenty-five from Nick Moreno, AMIPA Analyst, Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs, Regarding Notice of Supplemental Information, EE, EEA Number sixteen nine twenty-six, Route twenty corridor improvements. So noted. Next item, email dated March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, Emma Marsu, Project Planner, Epsilon Associates, Inc., Regarding Single Environmental Impact Report Summittal, EEA Number sixteen eight seventy-two. So noted. And last item of correspondence, an email dated March twentieth, twenty twenty-five from State Representative Hannah Kane, regarding, it's an update that remote and hybrid public meeting format has been extended for two years, so the COVID rules will continue for a couple more years. Correct? Correct. So, thank you for the update, Rep. Kane. I guess the only thing is, is Governor Hailey signed the extension. She has so March thirtieth, but I assume that's a pretty much done deal. So that's all we have on the agenda. Unless there's something someone would like to discuss at this point, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Have been moved in second, and all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you for joining us this evening. Have a good night.